Good morning, everyone. I'm Atlanta City Councilmember Byron Amos, Chair of the Atlanta City Council Transportation Committee. I'd like to officially call the meeting to order Wednesday, August 13th, 2025. To my far left, I have Councilmember Dozier, of course, our wonderful Vice Chair, Kari Overstreet, and then Councilman Hillis, and then we have been joined by Council President, President Shipman. So welcome, everyone, to the committee. Before I make a motion to amend the agenda, I'd like to, I mean, to adopt the agenda, I'd like to amend it by including the final report for the Commission to Honor Judge Thelma Watts-Comey-Moore. So motion has been made in a second. Open the vote.
Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. Motion has been made in a second.
Vote is closed, four yays, zero nays. The minutes have been approved. Mr. Chair, before we continue, there was an error on our computer here. We will have to go back and adopt the agenda. The amended agenda is just what we have before the body right now.
Okay, and before we do that, correct the vote, Councilmember Lewis said yes, as he was sitting down on this last, so it should be five. It is corrected. Okay, so we will go back. Do we have to, I mean, I can just make a motion, or do we have to bring it?
You have to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Gotcha. A motion to adopt the agenda. Motion has been made in a second. Please open the vote.
Repeat the seconder, please.
Councilmember Hillis.
Vote is open. Vote is closed, five yays, zero nays. Now the agenda has been adopted as amended.
Thank you. I'd like to formally welcome Councilwoman Lewis to the committee, has joined us. Brings us to public comment. As I remind everyone, you have three minutes to speak. I ask everyone to remain respectful and to keep your comments directed toward the committee. I have three people that have signed up. First would be Mr. Thad Oviet.
Yes, that's Thad Oviet. Yeah, sorry, it's Saline A. With a group called Parkin Cycles, and we wanted to address, there's a growing problem in Atlanta right now for e-bike riders that are riding out into the public right now, but they're not stopping. They're just riding out and riding back, or riding to a destination of their business or their home, and then charging up at that location. Part of the thing I'm here today is to introduce you to a new idea that we've just come out with, as part of Parkin Cycles, is something called a secure electric bicycle charging station. We've just finished a product and are launching it, and giving people the opportunity to now be able to park, securely park in public and charge. And this problem of people not interacting with the community, not stopping in the community, has even been agreed upon by the Beltline, just as close as yesterday, that they're not interacting with anything. So, being that there's no real parking infrastructure, other than bike locks and racks that are currently out there, and these people with these e-bikes, sometimes excessive $7,000, do not feel comfortable locking these e-bikes with bike locks to the racks, being that any of these locks and racks can be subdiffused or broken within a 30-second period, as seen by countless YouTube videos online, even put out by certain police departments. With our station and our ability, we can securely lock these bikes from theft and allow people to charge up not only their e-bikes, but also any other light electric vehicle, from the e-scooters, the skateboards, all the way up to golf carts. And the idea is that we want this to be sustainable. These are very low-power stations that can be deployed, same as vending machines. They can even be solar-powered, and they can be deployed directly into the same square-foot area as a regular bike rack. So I'm somewhat, kind of addressing the problem, but at the same point in time, letting you guys know that there's a new option out there. It's actually being built in Atlanta by Atlanta Resources. We have been through the entrepreneurship programs here in Atlanta, and are even taking advantage of, like, areas like Peachtree Corners, and being connected through T-Mobile, through our connectivity actions as well. These stations can be deployed out fairly quickly into the Atlanta metro area, can then be used to, for people to get around, to park, to charge, and that's a great benefit to the buildings as well, because then it decreases the possibility of fires happening in these locations, where people only charge at home, or only charge at the business, and it reduces the risks of battery overcharging. So I just want to let you guys know, there's a new option out there, even for the new micro-mobility RFP that's coming up, that now Atlanta has the ability to securely park and charge any e-bike out there on the market, any variation, through a company called Parkin Cycles, that we're just now coming out. Thank you much.
Thanks, sir. Next on the agenda is Jennifer Brooks.
Good morning, councilmembers, and thank you all for your good service. Just a quick note on 25-0-1391. That's the, as Councilmember Hillis mentioned, the mall cop contract. I just am having trouble with the math. I don't know why the initial $1.5 million that was set aside for Streets Alive security isn't going to be enough, and also, I'm wondering why it's going to be a private contractor, because I am concerned that this takes away from APD officers having a comfortable and useful face-fronting gig that supplements their income, and I think that might be important for officer retention. The next item I want to speak to is 25-0-1426, about the indoor and outdoor, sorry, the in-street and off-street dining on the public right-of-way, and I just wonder, does that agreement with those businesses include pretty clear requirements for maintaining those spaces, and then when those spaces are no longer being used, that they actually return them to the public use? And lastly, to address 25-0-1444, this is the permit-based, permit-based shareable dockless mobility device process being switched to a contract base. I don't understand what's the difference between a permit and a contract, and I wonder if, as a contract, will it actually give me what I've been asking for, which is safe, secure access for pedestrians on the sidewalks? So as you know, for seven years, I've just been a very loyal and generous giver of feedback about the effects of having shared dockless micro-mobility devices in my neighborhood, and it's really been, I just have really put on a rush lately, just to try to get enough information to the people working on the RFP, just to make their jobs easier in terms of what's critical for my neighborhood, for how that program gets to be implemented under its new contract. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person we have, Helen Williams-Bolston.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Helen Williams-Bolston. I am a Vine City resident. I'm here to speak in reference of MARTA. I've been a MARTA employee over the past 30 years. I've been retired since 2017. Ms. Overstreet, I heard you on the radio that suggested that MARTA come and speak in reference to the issues that they're having in far as the safety, and when I heard that, I went running and digging, trying to find my safety manual that I have for you, so that you can read and look into. We're getting ready to deal with a enormous city impact of people, and the transit system is not ready. They only have 50 officers, so if five call out, they're not ready. In order to secure the elevators, and what happened at that particular situation, sad to say, someone saw a mouse down at the bottom of the location as you go down. So of course, we overreacted. That person turned around, ran up the escalator, which made everybody else run up the escalator, which made the escalator shift, and when it shifted, it's saying, which way did I go? Which way did I go? So he says, "I'm going down. That's the way I'm supposed to go." It went down, and it went with those people. So there was a weight issue. So I'm only saying this to say, when all these people come to the city, MARTA needs to have a person at every elevator, because when we were working as a station manager, we were able to stop the people when the flow was heavy, and if you don't do that, you get too much weight, and once you do that, the computer doesn't know which way to go. On the other half of that, in reference to standing out there waiting on the bus, Mr. Amos, I'm not sure when the last time you actually rode a MARTA bus, but I would like to encourage you to ride the number 50 that goes to the UPS location. I happened to get on that bus because I needed to go to the police location. That bus was entirely overcrowded with people trying to get to work. Mind you, you got to come two hours from wherever it is that you live, then you get to a bus that's overcrowded, you can't sit down, the little air that is working is already gone, and then the people that's on there are hot, this, that, and the other, just uncomfortable, and here come a whole another COVID, just on the bus. We need more buses out there, so the seniors can move around. We have seniors that can't afford Uber and Lyft, but the bus don't run frequent enough for you to get out there to wait on them. Forty-five minutes waiting on the bus? No. And then the final part, here it is, we have a CEO. You hired someone, they don't even have their papers, and then you let them stay there that long? No, come on, MARTA.
Did you want to share that safety thing with me?
Okay, well, that brings us to the end of the public comment session, which takes us to our presentation. Today, we have been joined by Department of Aviation for their quarterly report. I see it's going to be briefly indelled. General Manager Smith.
Good morning. Yes, I too am well aware of the apparent length of the presentation, but I will do my best to get through it as briefly as possible. Hopefully, I can get through within, at a maximum, 15 minutes. But again, for the record, I'm Ricky Smith, General Manager of the Department of Aviation for the City of Atlanta, Chairman, members of the council. It is a pleasure to be here. It is always a pleasure to speak with you, in this particular case, to provide you updates on what's going on with Department of Aviation. There are a lot of good things going on, and the fact that you're open to hearing our progress is important. I think I have the clicker here. There you go. All right. So this is a quick look at the agenda that we will cover throughout this presentation. So focus on business performance. The period April the 1st through the end of July has been a remarkable period for the airport. Customer service is top of mind for us all the time. The mayor reminds us constantly that we should be focused on improving the customer's experience. Restroom experience is a major aspect of that, and so we're working very hard to improve our restroom facilities. We just completed FAA Part 139 inspection, which is an annual inspection, to ensure that we're complying with important federal safety regulations. That true, that too is important to the passenger's experience. Screening, security checkpoint experience is another important aspect of the customer's experience, and we're very pleased to be able to report that, you know, we introduced this system called COVIS, which monitors the wait time. It measures the wait time at our security checkpoints, and all of our measured security checkpoints compared to the same period last year, except for the Upper North, which is not measured by this product, saw an 11%, saw actually a reduction in wait time at those security checkpoints, and so we're pretty happy about that. We also introduced enhanced passenger processing at our Customers and Border Protection, and there we experienced a 48% reduction in wait time, and so we're working very hard to try to improve customers' experience. But putting the business performance aside, it's always important that we invest time in our youth through both our Summer Youth Employment Program, where we hosted some 87 high school students over the summer, and then our College Internship Program, where we hosted 44 college interns, and both groups were a joy to work with, and, you know, we look forward to next year being able to pour into their development again. Just to give you an update on our airline portfolio, as you see here, we have 11 US-based airlines operating out of Hartsfield-Jackson, another 16 foreign flag carriers operating. Etihad is the newest, which began service out of ATL just last month. Moving to, this map here is always one of my favorite maps. It shows you the reach that we have from a non-stop service standpoint out of ATL. We have 11 airlines, as I said, serving domestic markets, reaching 162 cities directly, 49 US states, and that also includes three territories. So the airport has enormous reach. From an international standpoint, we have 19 carriers providing non-stop service to 87 cities, that's 51 countries around the world. This is a picture of our cargo service portfolio. You can see we have 19 cargo carriers here that are providing valuable service. Thirty-one total airlines provide cargo service, 19 freighters that are listed here, and then another 12 of our domestic carriers that provide cargo service through the belly of the aircraft. This is a snapshot of the market share of our existing carriers out of ATL for the first quarter, as you see. Delta still has a very, very large presence at the airport, some 80% of our market share. That's about 42 million passengers that they handled during the quarter, or through June, I should say, 400,000 more than they did in 2024. However, their share slightly decreased due to an overall decline in passengers. The airport is the largest economic engine in the city, in the state, and in this region. It accounts for some $66 billion in economic impact for the state, another $34.8 billion in economic impact for the city alone. It is the largest employer in Georgia, with some 63,000 employees working directly for our partners at the airport. About 1,000 of those employees are Department of Aviation employees, and the airport system supports over 380,000 jobs. Moving on to infrastructure, so we've been pretty busy in that respect. Our multi-billion-dollar capital improvement program, what we call ATL NEXT, made tremendous progress. Here's some of the updates. Our CCTV digital upgrades project will enhance the network infrastructure system that supports CCTV, and installed 3,200 new cameras to provide a higher level of safety and security throughout Hartsfield-Jackson Airport and the entire central passenger terminal complex. Looking at our flagship project right now, it's the widening of Concourse D. This project will widen our newest, our narrowest concourse, increasing the overall building footprint by widening the existing concourse from 60 feet to 99 feet. It also extends the existing concourse to the north and south, increasing the overall length by approximately 288 feet. The modernized Concourse D will feature larger holdroom areas, restrooms, concessions, as well as more space to move around. We're currently working on Phase Two to be completed next month, and opening five new gates. There are eight phases in the project, with the targeted completion in the summer of 2029. Next phase will begin to introduce what we deem the, an example of the terminal of the future, as well as what we think will be the best restrooms in the country. As we move to our restroom enhancement project, the enhancement of six restroom pairs, male and female, facilities throughout the central passenger terminal facility will reflect the current industry standards to improve overall passenger satisfaction. Phase one will be completed February of next year. The Plane Train, which is critical to us remaining the most efficient airport in the world, we were able to unveil its first new Plane Train car in 15 years. That was Wednesday, May the 7th of last month. The planned growth of the fleet from 59 to 73 cars is made possible by another major infrastructure upgrade at the airport, the Plane Train's tunnel, which is an expansion of 600 feet, which began construction in 2019. In two years, the tunnel expansion and the new cars will increase capacity by 20%, resulting in an improvement in the average wait times to 90 seconds from the current 108 seconds. Probably the most visible project we have going on right now is our South Parking Deck. South Parking Deck Phase One construction is perhaps also one of the most important customer service amenities, because it provides much-needed parking capacity to our customers. We expect this project to be fully complete by June of next year. That'll be prior to World Cup. Once complete, the parking structure will have 6,500 structure spaces and 1,300 surface parking spaces, for a total of 7,800 spaces. Charging spaces for electric vehicles also will be included in this new facility. Complete, the project will be completed with the opening of Level 7. There are seven levels to this new facility, and we expect that to happen by August of this year. Parking deck technology systems, including parking guidance and parking revenue ground systems, ground management systems, are currently being installed to improve the customer's ability to navigate the parking facility. Another project that is rather visible is our West Curb Improvements Project. This is a 64-million project that involves roadway reconfiguration at the West Curb to relocate the taxi and airline shuttle services from the east of the terminal to the west side of the terminal, the Sky Train Airport Station. In addition to the project improved, the entry and exit merge lanes on the north and south roadways, which is much needed for in-and-out egress. The project was substantially completed May the 27th of this year. Moving on to sustainability, just to make your way, that we did publish two important reports. Our fourth annual environmental, social, and governance report released in June, which brings attention to the amazing efforts and the very focused efforts that we're engaged around sustainability. And then we've also updated our sustainability standards to mark best, to make sure that we're reflecting best practices in the industry. Moving on to diversity, so our ATL NEXT program has continued to see, experienced great progress in terms of diversity. It's about $5.4 billion program invoices so far. Of that $5.4 billion, about $4.5 billion of that is available for minority participation. $1.4 billion, or 26% of the invoice, has gone to small, minority-owned firms. Of that $1.4 billion, 26% has gone to FBEs, 14% to DBEs, 56% to MBEs, and 4% to SBEs. And so again, we continue to see progress in terms of making sure that women and minorities have access to opportunities with our most important spending program. Moving on to concessions, which is another pretty significant program. We have not seen an increase or change in the number of concession concepts over the years, however, and because of that, the number of ACDBEs has primarily been unchanged. Revenues are up, and for both the total program as well as for ACDBEs, participation is down, however, slightly 1% compared to 2025, and that is because of the consolidation of a couple of concepts. Moving on to operational performance, so during the quarter, 52.1 million passengers flew through ATL during the first six months of the year. Of the 26 airlines that operated at ATL, in the first six months, 13 airlines had fewer passengers than they did in 2024. Southwest had the largest decline, and threw 38% fewer passengers in 2025. Delta flew the most passengers, but grew a very minor 0.9% in the first half. Frontier, our fastest-growing carrier so far, grew 17% in the first half of the year. We saw 208,000 operations in Quarter Two, which is an increase over last year. Operations through June are also above 2024. More than 889,000 rideshare pickups took place at the airport, again, showing that we have a healthy ground transportation program. Passenger screening, we welcomed about 2.6 million passengers during the recent Memorial Day travel period, May the 21st through, May the 28th. The busiest day in history was Friday, May the 23rd, when more than 378,000 passengers passed through ATL. 14 of the top 25 days in the history of the airport are carried during this year. Moving on to customer experience, our customer experience team works with Airport Council International, one of the larger industry trade organizations, to gather data on passenger journey. We actually have interceptors in the terminal, meeting with passengers on a quarterly basis to get their feedback on a number of important customer service areas. On a scale of one to five, ATL received an overall satisfaction score of 3.71 for the quarter, a reduction from the same period. a reduction from the same period last year. We know we can do better, but this score reflects the construction that's going on in the terminal, both on Concourse D and our parking products, as well as the closure of a few concessions. All of those have impact on the customer's experience. But we continue to use data to determine where and how those improvements can be made to improve the customer's experience. The construction projects are all intended to improve the customer's experience over the long term. We should begin to see an increase in customer score. The highest rating in our customer service programs with personal travelers, and that was at four point zero five percent. Moving on to our concessions program, our goal is, as always, is to enhance our non-aeronautical revenue by providing diverse and dynamic concessions offerings at ATL. And as you can see here, we have nearly four hundred concessions covering retail service, vending, and food and beverage outlets. In order to provide opportunities for our passengers and business partners, ATL is in the midst of a substantial concessions refresh. It might be one of the largest concessions refreshes in the history of the airport. We're looking forward to that because the concessions program is normally one of the most transformative programs in the airport in terms of customer's experience. And so we'll keep you posted as that program develops. Our other commercial offerings include the rental car center, our parking options, and our ground transportation programs. All except for our rental car facilities have shown an increase in gross revenue over the same period last year. Moving on to finance, revenues were under forecasts by twenty-nine million dollars, primarily due to major weather-related events, which had a negative impact on passenger traffic due to airline cancellations. Expenses were under budget by twenty-three million due to on-call contracts not being used as planned and the timing of the execution of contracts versus when budgeted. So this underspend is greater than anticipated, and we are looking at our financials to see if additional accruals are needed. If you look at our credit rating, there's more than one point one billion dollars of cash on hand. This is equivalent to over seven, nine hundred and seventy days of cash on hand. Our strong guard general airport revenue bonds, debt service coverage allows us to borrow money for construction projects at a good cost because they're so attractive. ATL will issue bonds sometime later this summer. Our current CPE allows us to attract new flights and new airlines. Current CPE all-in is about six dollars and seventy-eight cents per employment. Moving on to technology. Earlier, I talked about the enhanced, the enhanced passenger processing program. Members of the ATL team work very closely with Customs and Border Protection to successfully implement this new facial recognition technology for international travelers. The program aimed at, aimed to reduce wait times for low-risk U.S. citizens. As a result of less U.S. citizens waiting in line, non-U.S. citizens realize a reduced wait time as well. A month's worth of data has demonstrated a decrease in U.S. citizens' wait time by fifty-four percent on Concourse E and forty percent on Concourse F. A decrease in non-U.S. citizens' wait times by twenty-six percent in Concourse E and twenty-two percent on Concourse F. And this is something we're very excited about because, again, passengers' experience, experience at our checkpoint is one of the key impactors of their overall customer experience. Moving on to organizational strength, our staffing figures have improved over the same period last year. We have filled eight hundred and thirty-one positions and are growing, an increase of almost fourteen percent over last year. Our vacancy numbers have increased due to the recently legislated positions. These positions are new to the organization, and we're still going through the process of filling those positions. Hence, our vacancy rate is not as low as it will be. Fifty positions were created, were approved, and are actively working to fill all of our vacancies. As a result, our total positions increased as well. Looking ahead. So projected open, opens reflect all contract locations being open. However, an unspecified number will be open due, this is related to our concessions program, projected date and based on build-out. So phase one is completed of our program. Phase two is largely under construction. Phase three, where we and our concessionaire partners are in design. Phase three B is in an active solicitation mode. And then phase four, we're still going through the planning process to pull together that package. Our small business initiative is as active as it's ever been. Our Gate to Growth Program is a program inspired by the mayor, was launched on February, February the twenty-seventh. This is an eleven-week course with graduation that was held in May of this year. There were twenty-five cohorts that graduated from the program. A companion project to that, to the growth, to Great Way to Growth Program, are five units in our food and retail program. And we're going through the process now of engaging some type of hybrid solicitation to, to select the beneficiaries of that program. As I close out, I just want to remind you that we have a very deep relationship with the Airport Minority Advisory Council, including the local chapter of AMAC. And on September the eighteenth through nineteenth, we will be hosting the She Swords Women in Aviation Summit. We're expecting this to be a very successful summit again this year. This will be the second. It will be held at the Marriott Marquis, and so we're excited about that. And then lastly, we have the Mayor's 5K on the Fifth Runway, which is scheduled for September the twentieth this year. This year, we'll be celebrating the eleventh anniversary of this unique race that raises money for the Mayor's Youth Scholarship Fund and United Way of Greater Atlanta. Registration is open, and we look forward to seeing you on runway on September the twentieth to celebrate with all of us. So again, I want to thank you for sitting through the presentation and allowing me to, to give you an update on what's going on at Department of Aviation. I do, before I turn it over, Chair, we have members of the ATL team here with me. You might ask the question, who's running the airport? Because we have many of our family members here, but there are two in particular I want to bring to your attention. Tyronea Smith, who's standing right here, who's been recently promoted to Deputy General Manager for Revenue Development and Management, and Crystal Davis, who's standing here, who's been recently appointed Deputy General Manager for Administration and People's Strategy. And they will make themselves available to you for introductions and any questions you might have. And I will now make myself available to you for any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir. I see the list is growing, so first start with Councilmember Doja.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, GM Smith. Good to see you as always, and thank you for being so responsive and so accessible. I'll probably start to call you again at seven o'clock in the morning, but we'll.
I'll take your, I'll take your calls anytime.
Just a couple of quick questions. The first one, on the operational metrics that you shared. I know MARTA has this data, but I will be curious to see the MARTA ridership data at the airport station included in the operational data that you're sharing here. It's, it's nice to see that there's growth happening with number of trips. I recognize passenger numbers are a little down. I am curious about that. But I know it looks like for Q2 twenty twenty-five, we've had eighteen percent growth in rideshare trips. I'm actually kind of alarmed by that number because we have such an accessible MARTA station that connects our airport to the rest of our city. And I'm wondering what's happening, whether it's economically, whether it's people's behaviors or choices, why they're choosing rideshare over MARTA, and I would love to try to unpack that a little bit. And that's not necessarily an airport thing to solve, but in partnership with MARTA, making sure we get more people to choose MARTA versus taking a car ship away from the airport. And I know y'all have made some operational changes with rideshare, things like that. But an eighteen percent increase in one quarter is a lot. And, you know, I wondered if there's some things we could do to encourage more people to take MARTA, especially as we have big events coming up in the next year and a half that nobody is, knows about, right? Nobody's ever heard of this, the World Cup, right? So I want to make sure we can figure out how we can better partner on that. So that was less of a question, but a comment that I would like to see there on the presentation. I did have a question about some of the information you shared with regards to Concourse E, Concourse F, the International Terminal. I've seen a lot of discussion and discourse nationally around reduction in international travel because people's concerns about our relatively heavy-handed approach to customs enforcement, to immigration enforcement. And while I am excited to see there's operational efficiency seats are coming from the facial recognition technologies that we've invested in, I do get concerned about the sort of surveillance state implementation that is, is part of a larger ecosystem that is negatively impacting people's willingness to come visit our country and our cities. So I do have concerns about that. But operationally, I'm curious what the impact is of the reduction in international travel on our concessions, on how we're implementing staff and, 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 or staffing that part of our airport facilities when you have fewer people coming through, through the gates. Are you seeing any impact on that? Are you making any operational decisions based on reduction in international travel? Just kind of trying to think through what the larger implications are that could potentially bleed into next year's World Cup planning where you have fewer people visiting us from abroad.
Yeah, airports are always affected by what's going on in the environment. You've been in this business long enough, you know that there are cycles, and so you don't overreact to any particular period. Our focus has been to make sure that we have the infrastructure and the systems in place to best service the passengers that are flying internationally. Our international program is still strong. As a matter of fact, it might be stronger than our domestic program. And we work closely with our airline carriers, and they're the ones who are more responsive to the marketplace than we are because they have to decide whether or not they're going to put seats in the market to support a market that is declining. We have not seen that here yet. But again, our focus is to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to serve the passengers that are coming to the airport.
Well, thank you. And, you know, I recognize that the airport is funded through an enterprise fund. So, you know, those sort of global implications do impact our airport's bottom line. And so if there's anything that our city can be thinking about to try to alleviate that, make it, make our city more welcoming, encourage more international travel, I'm sure myself and my colleagues would be happy to lean into that work, especially as we have some big events coming up in the next couple of years.
We have a, we have a very, very strong international affairs unit that works very closely with the city's international affairs unit. It's been very effective at going into regions of the country and kind of introducing Atlanta in a way that when we go in for an air service expansion effort, they're familiar with Atlanta, they know the benefits of, of having access to Atlanta. And so we will continue to do that. We have several international trips coming up for that reason. We have inaugural flight coming up to, to an international destination. So again, we're still seeing upsides with our international program. Your points are well taken. I am too concerned about the impacts of, of some policies and how it may affect our international traffic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Next would be Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, my bow tie brother.
Remind me to wear a bow tie the next quarter.
Especially on Wednesdays, right? The airport's in really good shape from the things you're saying. I was thinking about a summer youth employment program in which all of our kids that actually get experience. I was able to see some of my young folks actually taking the MARTA, Councilmember Doja, taking the MARTA to, to the airport this summer. I would see them all summer. The concessions program, I, I know we're high on DBE, we're watching the small businesses. When you look at the passenger screening, the Atlanta airport has always been the world's most traveled. And if you have the first and seventh busiest screening days in ATL history, that lets you know we're still moving in the right direction there. Our credit rating, three years of funding with us. So we're doing really well as a, as a city. The goal, what I wanted to talk to you about is, my first year elected, we hired the most summer youth employment program. It was the most that they had. Let's double, let's double it up. It's time for us to get back to the most again, right? Because we had the first and seventh busiest days in the city of Atlanta history. So let's, let's increase this amount of people having access to do that. So let's at least make sure that, that one twenty-five number, let's try to get it to two hundred or, or two fifty now because the airport is still busy. The superior credit rating, let's get to four years. Man, I love what we're doing. I know we're at three years right now. I think that we can push to try to get to four years, especially with this amazing transportation committee, making sure that you get everything you need. And lastly, on the organizational strength, the job fair that we hosted and wrote at Atlanta Metropolitan's Atlanta Technical College last week on August second was amazing. We had the help from Ms. Brittany Barber, Ms. Tracy Gilbert, Ms. Ms. Johns. We also had Ms. Anita. So I, and we had you. It was so intentional. It was so intentional. It's something I've been trying to get to District Twelve for the past three years, ever since I seen the first one at Maze High School. And so to see the thousands of folks come down Metropolitan Park where it looked like we were giving away something free to. My goal is to make sure we bring some of those folks on and to improve that job fair, something I think you could do directly, Mr. Smith. Because I'm always looking at how we grow. The growth, I think, there is to make sure that Delta, Frontier, Spirit, the pop, the airlines are there. Because I want to see the young people who graduate from our high schools and who live in our city, who have these same, same accents I have, working at those front desks. When I go to other cities and I, and I check into airlines, I always hear the accents of their cities. When I walk through our city and I hear the accents, it's not that same accent of a Maze High School graduate, of a South Atlanta graduate. I want to make sure that access is there. And so we have these job fairs, thousands of folks come out, and they love it. But I want to make it better by offering that Delta job or that Spirit job, so they're entry-level positions. And I ask for anything else, they're entry-level positions. Let's see if we can get them to add those to those job fairs. And thank you so much for your intention on making our airport continuing Jackson Hartsfield Airport's tradition. Thank you again, I yield, Chair.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next would be Councilwoman Nova Street.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. Ricky.
Good morning, Vice Chair.
I am always, again, thinking about the customer experience because my favorite thing to do in life is to get to the airport and get on a flight and go somewhere good, and then get on a flight wherever I am and come back to our beautiful city. So I am on page twenty-eight, looking at the customer satisfaction and overall experience for a customer experience. And just want to also constantly make it top of mind that that's really, really important. I know we're doing well with our regulations, making sure that we've got all the lights on the runway and that, you know, security is, is tight and, and that we are checking people in at TSA properly. Customer experience is so important also. So I want to get out of the threes. I want to move away from the threes. And when looking at this, I, I don't exactly remember last quarterly report exactly where we were. I know it was still the threes. But was it, was it the overall satisfaction, was it three, seven, zero? Did we move up at all?
It was actually slightly lower. It was slightly, slightly higher. We've, we've actually gotten a little worse.
Okay, I was wondering why it wasn't on here. What about the overall experience, three, five, nine? Was it three, five, zero?
Both, both were higher last quarter.
Okay.
And I can speak to that if you.
Yes.
So a couple of things. You know, the mayor talks about the city being a group project. Well, this is, this is a group project as well. Many of the service areas that are reflected in the scores are not directly controlled by us. It's not an excuse we're responsible for. And so we are, we formed a, a committee, a cross-airport committee, so that we can be intentional about how we focus on moving the scores. That has worked in other cases, and we think that'll be effective here. That being said, these scores reflect progress that's been made in the airport. Construction, both in the terminal and the parking garage, and that has the effect of, of, you know, downgrading people's experience in the airport. And so, so this reflects a little pain before we see the progress that we're building for. You know, I, I went to sleep last night thinking about the vice chair asking a question about customer experience, and I came in this morning thinking about the same thing. Karen and I talked about this out in the hallway. So I know this is important to you. It's important to us as well.
It is. And I don't know, I think we're going to celebrate when we hit a four and then, oh my gosh, when we get to five. Because I know we're. oh my gosh, when we get to five, because I know we're going to get there. I really do. The buzz around town, all of the different events that I've been going to is around pilot programs that the airport's visiting right now in terms of transportation within, you know, internal transportation, making sure we're being innovative with the P R Ts and the personal rapid transit. And I, I know that's going to help. I know when we open up and get rid of some and get some of this construction behind us, when we open up that parking garage, that it will rise. I'm hoping we'll be able to celebrate then. But just always top of mind, this customer experience. And, you know, I'm hoping that that committee will continue to look at ways of improving the experience of landing in international, having to get back to domestic. I definitely want some type of dedicated experience to just that, where it's not part of general population trying to, with passengers just trying to come and leave. I want something direct between the two terminals. And I'm going to always want that. I'm always going to want to get out of the threes. So, but thank you so much for the entire presentation. I appreciate it. Thanks for your wonderful start. This jumpstart has really been refreshing. Heard nothing but great news about capabilities and the fact that whatever's not correct at the airport, whether we can see it directly or not, that you're going to be on top of it because this is who you are. And I appreciate that very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have an amazing team.
Thank you, team.
Thank you. Councilmember Lewis.
Something I want to make sure I bring in because just thinking about safety, thinking about the way we've, we used to hear about people breaking into cars into the airport. And thinking about ways we can get better, continue to get better, knowing we have nine hundred seventy-nine days of cash on hand, which is essentially three years. And so my question around, my question to you is how many parking lots do we have at the airport? If you don't know.
We know the answer to that. How many parking lots do we have? You mean surface and parking facilities?
Yes. So.
So that's eleven parking facilities, seven parking structures, and then four surface parking.
So I know we spend a lot of money on security and I was trying to do a little math. So with 1.1 billion of cash on hand, the robotic dogs that have eliminated car break-ins on Cleveland Avenue, which is one of the roughest areas in the city of Atlanta, eliminated them at the Brown's Mill Golf Course, eliminated them at four, four, five apartments. They are $10,000. So if we spend less than 0.01% of the 1.1 billion dollars, which is $110,000, we can get 11 of the robotic dogs. And the technology that we already have at the airport, the public safety infrastructure we already have at the airport, we can get those 11 dollars. We can just attest. So my, because I know you're doing an amazing job, just like people in my district. No matter what, they want a little bit more. I come out and they want a little bit more and I feel like we can get it. And so we can throw a little spaghetti on the wall with 0.01%, $110,000 to test, to make it safer for long time travel. Thinking about customer experience, folks who, I used to travel 200 days a year. So I used to park my car at the airport and I used to travel. And thankful my car wasn't that nice where people were trying to take it. But it would make folks feel a little bit better if we look at 0.01% of the 1.1 billion dollars that we have on hand and try this safety measure that I've seen work on Cleveland Avenue on a rougher, you know, not rougher area because crime is better there than it is in most areas in the city of Atlanta. So, but yeah, we can try that with 0.01. Thank you.
Thank you. Being drawn, of course, by Council President, so President Shipman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. G M Smith, thanks for being here and your presentation. I've had a chance to travel pretty often this summer and a couple of things I wanted to follow up on. One is bathroom maintenance. Almost every bathroom, no matter which terminal I've been in, have one or two sinks or one or two stalls that are inoperative at any one time. I know there's a capital process underway right now for improvements. Can you talk a little bit about the maintenance? Because it's, actually, on one side, the restrooms have been immaculately clean. So it's been great from that perspective. But with inoperative units, it's not a great look. So can you talk a bit about that?
So there's those aspects of that, of that solution that we have control over. And then there's aspects that we do not have control over. So with respect to what we have control over, we are renovating our restrooms to best in-class standard restrooms. And you see that with the Concourse D whitening project. And you'll see that as we roll out other improvements to the central passenger, passenger terminal. In terms of day-to-day maintenance, that is a matter that I've had conversations with the internal team. We do not have, meaning the Department of Aviation does not have enough control over the day-to-day maintenance of the terminal facility. A unique arrangement to this airport that other airports do not experience. And so we're working very diligently internally to see how we can establish more control over that process. Once that happens, or to the extent that that happens, then we'll be able to put strategies in place to make sure that we do a better job at maintaining restrooms. That being said, everybody goes to the restroom at the same time, right? And so, so when you go to the restroom, you're not going to see it at its best unless you're using the bathroom during a down period. There are strategies still to make sure that even during that period, restrooms are as clean as possible. And again, we, we need to be in a situation where we can employ those kinds of strategies.
Is it a policy implication? Is there a policy by which the, who's responsible for the maintenance could be changed at the council level? Or is it, or can you go into just a bit more depth on the control issue?
Well, we're still exploring that. So I don't want to get ahead of the internal work that we're doing. But the current arrangement is that the, for the most part, maintenance of the central passenger terminal facility, which is what we term, the terminal, is handled by an organization called the A A T C, the Atlanta Airport Terminal Corporation, which we have no, no control over. The International Terminal has a similar arrangement where it's managed by an organization called T B I. Slightly different arrangement. We have a little more control over that arrangement because we actually have an agreement with that group. But with the A A T C, we do not have an agreement that allows us to have more influence over management. So again, we're looking internally at strategies to enhance that.
Thank you. Also, wanted to talk a little bit about the impact of the capital upgrades on the plane train. I got to walk from Terminal D to Terminal A because of very limited plane train usage last week, as did thousands of other of my fellow travelers. How often do we anticipate that very limited plane train availability is going to occur? How many times are we going to, in essence, be, it's going to be easier to walk than to take the plane train as we do capital upgrades?
I think the reliability rate for the plane train is something like 99.7%. And with the addition of the new cars and the expansion of the tunnel, we think we're going to improve that, that number. And so whenever it's down, it's disruptive and it's significant. But it is, it is rare that the plane train is down. But we're still looking to get closer to 100%.
So you don't anticipate a lot of structural limits or shutdowns of the plane train due to the capital upgrades?
Well, I will look to... This is Frank Rucker, the chief engineer for the airport.
All right, Frank Rucker, Deputy General Manager, Airport Infrastructure. We started a very intensive program to change out the, the plane train switching, which was quite old, you know, almost forty, forty-five years old. So that switching program is nearing completion. It should be completed probably by September. And at that point, that nighttime reliability will be enhanced because you're not shutting it down. All right, so that's going on over the course of time. And efficiencies, as General Manager points out, will be improved as we go through the fiscal twenty-six year, as we start incorporating new cars and putting in control systems. That will basically improve the efficiency.
But the switching specifically should be done in the next couple of months?
I'm thinking September, October timeframe.
Got it. Thank you. Last thing, one of my favorite spots in the airport is the walk between A and B, which is the forest canopy art installation. I have noticed lately that, I remember when it was first installed, there were both video and audio components of that, neither of which seemed to be on recently. I wonder if there is, there's a specific question about that particular art piece and whether those original pieces are going to be brought back online. And then just more generally, the maintenance of the art pieces. Are we on top of the maintenance of the art pieces that have been installed in the airport?
So that's, that's to that question, Council President. I need to get back to you in a response, but I will say this. We have a, we have a massive arts program throughout the airport. And so we are looking internally at developing a curator who will lead on that program. And once that happens, then I can get back to you on how that, how that plays out. But I need to get back to you on the answer to your question.
Great. Thank you. I look forward to that. That's all I have.
There we go. Councilwoman Overstreet.
Yeah, you know, I was going to just wait until next time, but I don't want to. And it's because, I don't, because you guys, I want to make sure that the whole team knows that I appreciate the work that you do. Tom Nasaki, thank you. Anita Williams, definitely Frank Rucker. When he got up, I realized, I'm like, you know what? I don't say thank you enough. Brian Benefield and especially Janlin, and their names weren't mentioned today. And I just want to, you know, just say thank you. And if I missed anyone, you too. Because I just really feel like we have the most competent, pleasure, pleasurable, literally, open, responsive experts in the game. And that's why I know we can be at all fives on all levels like we can. So thank you again for your presentation.
Well, on your behalf, I say thank you and couldn't agree with you more.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I guess I wrap it up now that you've called out the starring team. I have to ask, who's running the airport? No, I'm just playing. Couple of comments. You mentioned that the, the wait time thing you was doing did not cover Upper West. Why do we leave since that's probably one of our busiest intakes? I mean, Upper North, not, not Upper West, Upper North. Why do we leave them out?
It was not intentional.
Perhaps I'm going to get clarification. Hello, my name is Christopher Chris. I'm the Senior Deputy General Manager for Technology at Hartsfield-Jackson, Atlanta International Airport. Are you specifically talking about the enhanced passenger part or ZOVIS?
ZOVIS.
Okay. Yep. Right now, ZOVIS is currently installed primarily in the domestic side of our organization. And so we're tracking our primary checkpoints on the domestic side. And we're working to improve that effort right now, actually, looking to invest into that and also see what we can do on the international side. So does that answer the question or?
In a, in a way, so I, I'm firmly staying with the General Manager and he's very political about it. But he talks about things that is not in control of the airport being. And I know all of the alphabets that we have out there won't call their name, but TSA is one. Wait times at the airport is not controlled by the airport. It is controlled by TSA. So if we have a service that is looking at our wait time, why would we leave something like Upper North out of that service area, I guess?
That's, yeah, forgetting that's something I suppose we'd have to look into, have to look into why we went about it the way we did a few years back.
Yeah, we, we'll, let us get back to you on the answer to that question. It's a legitimate question and we'll get back to you on the answer.
Please do. And then when it comes to the cleaning this and the maintenance of our airport as well, I know we don't control that. That is done by contractors as well. If we have to bring it in-house next year, it's budget season, it's the time to talk about doing it. Because we keep getting dinged for things that we don't control. Wait times, airline constellations, no rental cars, those are things not controlled by you and your staff. But this customer service get dinged for it. Because being a customer service myself, people will hardly tell you when you are five, but always willing to tell you when you are one or three. So everything we can control with our own destiny, I stand with you in doing it. It would be interesting with, with all of the college interns and high school interns, do we keep track of any that may come back and actually become City of Atlanta employees or take a job in aviation? Do we keep that by any chance?
So I don't know that we track how many come back to work for the city in general. But we have a few employees that, that at one point were in one of those programs. And we always strongly invite them to come back for another internship program and ultimately a job with the airport.
Thank you. Couple of other comments. Couple of meetings ago, we had the independent shuttle drivers down here that talked about the reorg on the west curve and things to that nature. If we have not talked to them, please let's go out and talk to them to see if we can get that address. Then the other thing, last two.
We did, we did have that meeting with them. A couple of weeks ago. It was a very good meeting and we think we're going to have a very good outcome.
Absolutely. Love it. She Sores, I was involved in the very first one. Trust me, when you're talking about women in aviation, this is the conference for you to be at. So all of us in the sound of my voice, please, was that September eighteenth or nineteenth? Just stop by, see what's going on because it really is a special event. And then five K on the runway coming from the security team out there. That deadline that they give us to get your names in, please adhere to it. Because, and because I would rather have the security team out securing the runway other than running background chats on all of the last minute additions that come in. I have been part of that team that actually had to stay over to run those last minute names. So please, everyone participate in the five K as a worthy cause. But more importantly, adhere to the deadline, get it in. Gentlemen, General Manager Smith, please head back to the airport, take your team, get it off autopilot. But just thank you for everything you do. And just echoing what Councilwoman Overstreet said, thank you. The eyes are always on us. And with the work you're doing out there, those eyes turn into smiles. So thank you very much. Okay, colleagues, moving forward, before we move forward, moving swiftly. We actually finished public comments before we had a citizen that was able to make it into the room to do so. So if there's no objection, I'd like to go back, reopen public comment for Mr. James Curtis. Is he still here? And if we can get Mr. Curtis a mobile mic. And Mr. Curtis, you'll have the same three minutes, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Amos and all the other council members. And thank you, Mr. Solomon Commissioner. Also, I saw in the back Alan Smith, Deputy Commissioner. And anyway, Alan Smith knows me. I had become good friends with the inaugural commissioner of the Department, Atlanta Department of Transportation, Josh Rowland. And anyway, Josh Rowland had introduced me to former Mayor Keisha Lance Bottoms, who had done a tremendous amount of disability work for our city to make sidewalks more accessible. And anyway, I, I volunteer at Shepherd Center. I've been volunteering there for over twenty years and have recently moved to Hardest Buckhead, which is across the street. And when I moved into Hardest Buckhead, I was coming home from Shepherd Center in the crosswalk. I had to ride away and a vehicle struck me going forty miles an hour. She wasn't paying attention. And anyway, for a vehicle to hit a wheelchair in the sidewalk, that should be incarceration. How could you do something like that? But anyway, I am here with Dr. Helen Brown. She has a wonderful new technology, WheelDastrian. And I... And I would like to implore the Atlanta Department of Transportation to please install that in front of Shepherd Center. As there are many, many vulnerable pedestrians like myself who use the sidewalks there on a daily basis. And actually, it is a hospital zone. And, and we should have all the bells and whistles that, that schools have to make it safer for pedestrians. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. As you already know, the Commissioner of Transportation is sitting right behind you, so we hear you. Also got your email as well. So that is definitely a conversation we can begin to have with the committee and with the department. But thank you, sir. Okay, that brings us back on track with presentations. As we amended the agenda to add the final report, you know, last year we lost one of the pillars in the community, Judge Delma Watts-Comey Moore. So I put together a commission with your support to actually figure out ways that we can honor her. The commission met a total of three times. First time, you know, to get the assignment. The second time, we talked about possible ways. Third time, we did come up with three solutions, those with three recommendations. The first is to talk to Emery to see if we could get some type of room or program or class named after the late judge. That's where she attended, I also believe taught. The second is to contact Fulton County to see if we could possibly get a courtroom or the entire Division of Family Services, since that's where she really made her mark, to see if we can get that, those services named after her. And then the final recommendation that we came up with was the possible renaming of Lee Street. So those are the three things that the commission came up with. So that is the report that we have after I talked to my colleagues that actually represent Lee Street. We would decide on moving forward with that. But that is the final report. Those are the three recommendations on how to honor such a wonderful person. And so I would just give that. I don't think we need to accept it or anything as a final report, but I did want to read it into the record and you have it also in your package that was emailed to you. So that actually takes us to the consent agenda, our first read.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Brings us to our ordinances for first reading. We have, for which we have four, starting with item number one, 2501464. An ordinance by Transportation Committee to ratify the City of Atlanta submission of an application for the 2025 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant and Local Road Assistance Administration funding through the LMIG Application System from the Georgia Department of Transportation for street resourcing projects in a combined amount not to exceed $10,866,059.16 and for other purposes. Item number two is 2501465. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee on behalf of the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 and Section 2-1292 subsection E of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provision, on behalf of the Department of Aviation to retroactively authorize and ratify execution of contract number listed herein, perimeter gates, inspections and exits with AUS3 joint venture, containing two one-year renewal options and for other purposes. Item number three, 2501466. An ordinance by Transportation Committee amending the fiscal year 2026 Airport Passenger Facility Charge Fund Budget by transferring to and from appropriations the amount of $235,880,000.00 to provide funding for various projects at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes. And finally, item number four, 2501467. An ordinance by Transportation Committee to amend the fiscal year 2026 Airport Renewal and Extension Fund, Airport and Passenger Facility Charge Fund, 2012C Garbs Non-AMT, 2029A Non-AMT Garbs, 2022A Non-AMT Garbs, 2023B2 Garbs Non-AMT, 2023C Garbs AMT, 2024A2 Garbs Non-AMT and 2024B Garbs AMT Budgets by transferring to and from appropriations total amount of $24,9427.00 for reimbursement of the Airport Renewal and Extension Fund and for other purposes.
Takes us to our red legend.
Yep. This brings us to our ordinances for second reading, starting with item number five, 2501391. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to execute the First Amendment to an agreement number listed herein for security guard services for 2025 Atlanta Streets Alive Events with RLP Network LLC respectively, on behalf of the City of Atlanta and to add the Atlanta Department of Transportation as an authorized user for services under the agreement and to add funding in amount not to exceed $1,000,000.00. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, we do have a request to hold this item.
Motion to hold. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
One moment. Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item has been held in committee. This brings us to item number six, 2501425. An ordinance by Transportation Committee authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to reimburse the Atlanta Department of Transportation for the City of Atlanta Program Liaison in the amount not to exceed $500,000.00 from the account numbers listed herein. Authorizing the Chief Financial Officer to amend the fiscal year 2026 Intergovernmental Grant Fund Budget in the amount not to exceed $500,000.00 to anticipate an appropriate proceeds from the More Marta Expansion Program from the Metropolitan Atlanta Rapid Transit Authority to the Intergovernmental Grant Fund Budget to fund the City of Atlanta Program Liaison, Transit Policy Lead and/or More Marta Program Coordinator positions and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. This brings us to item number seven, 2501426. An ordinance by Transportation Committee to amend Chapter 138 Articles seven and eight of the City of Atlanta Code to combine the permitting process and permits for off-street and on-street right-of-way dining available to eating and drinking establishments to operate outdoor dining areas on the street in public right-of-way and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. This brings us to item number eight, 2501427. An ordinance by Transportation Committee establishing the fiscal year 2026 Airport Renewal and Extension Fund Budget by transferring to and from appropriations in the amount of $82,525,681.00 to provide funding for various projects at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. That's a motion that's been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. This brings us to item number nine, 2501428. An ordinance by Transportation Committee waiving Section 2-1187 Source Selection of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to authorize the mayor or his designee to enter into Amendment Number Three for FC 10278, Fuel Storage Facility and Fueling Facility Operation and Ground Support Fueling Management at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with BGS2MATL joint venture on behalf of the, of the Department of Aviation to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis for a period of up to nine months effective August 28th, 2025 in an amount not to exceed $12,375,000.00. All contracted work will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
I have a quick question about this one. Who from the aviation would be speaking in this paper? And actually, anyone may be able to do it. Do the same guidelines for minority participation applies to joint ventures as well? And then, and then the last thing I did express during the briefing is the month-to-months. I know that's out of your control. Don't even have to respond to it. But this is a lot of money for us to be going month-to-month. I know it's a procurement thing, but if we can just get rid of these month-to-months with this large amount of money, it'll be appreciated.
And noted, we are in the process of negotiating a long-term agreement and it's just taking a little bit longer than we anticipated.
Thank you. With that being said, motion to approve. That's a motion that's been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. Mr. Chair, brings us to item number 10, which we do have, an substitute for this item. The substitute removes senior from Michael Langford's name and adds Prior Street Southwest to the street renaming designation and makes revisions in the caption throughout the legislation.
So there's a motion to bring forth the substitute, and which I will second. Please open the vote.
One moment. Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The substitute is before the body. This is item number 10, 2501436. An ordinance by Councilmember Antonio Lewis is substituted by the Transportation Committee to rename a portion of Prior Road Southwest and Prior Street Southwest extended from Ralph David Abernathy Boulevard Southwest to Lakewood Avenue Southwest as Michael Langford Drive to waive certain provisions of Section 138-8 of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, there is a need to hold this item for a public hearing.
Okay, before I make a motion to hold, I think Councilmember Lewis has a motion.
First, I want to amend to, Councilmember Boone asked me to put a name on his legislation. So I want to amend to add Councilmember Boone to this.
Second. Is there anyone else that would like to add their name? And Amos.
So we have a motion to amend to add the names of Councilmember Andrea Boone, Marcy Carly Overstreet and Byron D. Amos to the sponsors of the legislation. Vote is open. We need a second, Councilmember.
A motion to amend was done by Lewis. I second it.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The amendment is before the body.
I'm motion to hold.
Can, can I ask you a couple of questions about that first?
I withdraw my motion. Go ahead.
The, so we had the Michael Langford Legacy Commission. They met and they've actually done everything I've seen other folks do here when we rename roads. So I want to make sure we're just following all the proper protocols. Is this, did we skip something?
Jonathan Gall with the Law Department. Do you have some specific concern, Councilmember Lewis?
I was just trying to make sure that the, I've seen us, what, what step should this be on? I thought we were on a further step here. I thought we were at the stage to where we should be renaming the road.
That's, we are on that process. This is, you asked somewhat of a loaded question, given that this is, this ordinance that we have in front of us does waive a number of provisions in our ordinance for renaming and dedication of streets. But this is also very consistent with what we're doing. What we're doing is very consistent with how we've been doing things recently, how council has been choosing, has chosen to do things. So we are right on course for the, how we've been doing the process. So yes, so once we have the public hearing at, at the next committee meeting, that we will be able to have the committee vote and then move it on.
So it will be at the next Transportation Committee meeting?
Yes.
Thank, thank you for that.
Motion to hold. Second. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
One moment. Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item has been held in committee. This brings us to item number 11, 2501442. An ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos authorizing the City of Atlanta to waive the competitive procurement source selection provisions contained in Section 2-1187 of Article 10, Procurement and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances, as well as any other conflicting code provisions, change the name of the supplier, A Action Janitorial Services Incorporated to A Action Facility Services Incorporated, and execute renewal option number one in the amount not to exceed $1,616,868.39 for an RFP number listed herein for janitorial services with A Action Facility Services Incorporated on behalf of the Department of Aviation at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport for a term of one year effective August 29th, 2025 through August 28th, 2026. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item is favorable. This brings us to item number 12. Mr. Chair, there is a request to substitute this item. The substitute makes revisions throughout the legislation.
Motion to bring forth the substitute. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is, vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The substitute is before the body. This is item number 12, 2501444. An ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos is substituted by Transportation Committee to amend Chapter 150-401 subsection D, Traffic and Vehicles of the Atlanta City Code of Ordinances to update the shareable docked mobility device permitting process from a permit base to a contractual-based regulatory scheme with the operators and for other purposes.
Motion to approve as substituted. Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item is approved as substituted. This chair that brings us to our resolutions, starting with item number 13, 25, excuse me, there is a request to substitute this item as well, and the substitute does change the caption. This substitute corrects the spelling of Pierce Street and Allen Avenue and makes revisions throughout the legislation.
Motion to bring forth the substitute. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The substitute is before the body. This is item number 13, 25R3739. A resolution by Councilmember Antonio Lewis is substituted by the Transportation Committee requesting the Commissioner of the Atlanta Department of Transportation to conduct a traffic study along the 600 to 700 block of Pierce Street Southwest between Metropolitan Parkway Southwest and Allen Avenue Southwest to determine the need for any safety improvements, additional, such as additional signage and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yays, zero nays. The item is approved as substituted. This brings us to item number 14. This is 25R3742. A resolution by Councilmember Michael Julian Bond authorizing the mayor or his designee to amend the project management agreement for the second time with Atlanta Downtown Improvement District for the I-75/85 capping study, The Stitch, to authorize the mayor or his designee to execute the Second Amendment through the project management agreement with the Atlanta Downtown Improvement District related to The Stitch and for other purposes.
Motion to hold. Motion has been made in second. Please open the vote. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. I have one question. So we're in discussion. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question is for commissioners is what's driving the need to hold the legislation?
Solomon Cavanaugh is ATL DOT Commissioner. As far as I understand, it's administrative. We are waiting on some administrative work to be done in signatures on this. So I can get the details of that back to you.
Is it, do we think it's just going to be held a cycle or is this something that might be longer?
Should be, should be ready for Monday. Okay. Next transportation.
Okay.
Next cycle.
All right. And then while on the topic of The Stitch, and I promise this will make sense as I work through this question. I know Stitch Project is moving forward despite some of these federal funds being clawed back. I know we have, I see in the room what was central line of progress. Part of the, what has been envisioned for The Stitch Project has included Part of the, what has been envisioned for The Stitch Project has included streetscaping, including Peachtree Street. I know we are still kind of figuring out what the next phase of the Peachtree Shared Street experience is going to look like, how much of that is tied to the Stitch funding, how much is the city contributing considering we've already had money in that pot from T-S Plaza, from other funding sources. As we're in this interim period, I know with what happened on Peachtree Street a few months ago, we've asked the department to come back to the table to reinstall cross, mid-block crossing at the place where Mr. Sue lost his life a few months ago. Councilmember Faroki had a resolution that asked the department to have that completed by the end of June. My understanding from our fatal crash review commission meeting was that the department was going to be installing a much more robust crossing that included rapid flashing beacons, that included raised crossing. Where are we with that? And I'm getting a lot of questions from constituents, a lot of concerns that, hey, we still see people crossing the street here, this mid-block crossing. We can't wait for The Stitch to be done before we can have safe streets on Peachtree. So sorry to kind of throw this curveball at you, but to me, it's all tied together. It's about connectivity in our urban core, and I want to make sure people are able to cross the street safely.
So before you ask that, I'm looking at our politarian, because is that tied completely to The Stitch funding? Just a simple yes or no? Because if it's not, I'd like to carry this motion. Then we can come back and get the answer. Not letting you off the hook. I just want to make sure the motion is clean. And, okay, let us carry this motion that has been made. And second, then stay right there. So open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The item has been held in committee.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So the short answer is yes, it's related. However, the money in the project that was tied to The Stitch includes the Peachtree Shared Streets corridor or concept. So related to the crossing, the design associated with that Peachtree improvement is being coordinated with ADID and discussed with ATL DOT. And we would rather not have a design that is in conflict with the crossing. We went ahead and improved the corridor to make sure that our crosswalks at the blocks were in place and we had a smooth section. However, we're just doing our due diligence, and we should have the answer very soon. We just want to make sure we're doing the right thing, not only for our residents and for safety, but also for plans for the entire downtown area related to The Stitch. So I hope that helps. I think we can have a conversation offline to talk about timing, but it's all interrelated, and the details of which probably need to have a conversation with you about that timing.
And I appreciate that, and I would love to have that conversation. I will say, because the Atlanta Fatal Crash Review meeting was a public meeting, and this was stated as a short-term solution, you know, there's a lot of interest, not just from residents and from advocates, but from everyone who is spending money in America's heart, to folks who are, just want to feel safe downtown to see some improvements happen sooner or later. And so, number one, the sooner the department can share publicly what the designs are, what safety improvements are coming, I think will make us all feel more at ease that, you know, we are listening to the concerns of our stakeholders beyond, you know, people who happen to own property in the area, but also people who actually use these spaces. And the fact that we've already said publicly that, you know, we are making these improvements, I'm really like to see some movement happen on that. And so, happy to have that conversation offline, but I think it's imperative that we have these conversations publicly as soon as possible as well. And I do have another question for you, but I know Councilmember Overstreet on the same thread seems to have a question. So I'll give it back to the chair, and then I'll come back to my other question. Councilwoman Overstreet?
Yeah, so in the same vein, I did meet with Dozier and one of our stakeholders about exactly what he's talking about. And I, I think it's imperative that we install something, you know, the, some safety measures ahead of whatever we're, whatever is stalling. Because they not only expressed to us the difference in the experience of the actual merchants that are, are in the buildings there, but they also expressed the willingness that they've had over the last few years of investing of their own profits into the experience and making sure that it's safe. So I want to make sure we're matching at least their level of participation in the safety around that area. And I don't know that we are. So that's, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
One more question. Sorry. Just, just, we don't get too many crack to the bat with your commissioners, so sorry that we got you real quick. I know we just had the work session a couple of weeks ago with regards to curbside management and our parking management, RFP. I know there was some, there needed to be some initial conversation about some of the legal kind of framing of that. I just, what has come out of that work session, and what are some of the next steps we can anticipate going forward?
So next steps will include engagement with this body to talk about the RFP progress. There's a fee study that we are getting closer to finishing that will help guide how we go to the market with our RFP. It is progressing nicely. There's legislation conversations that we'll be returning to you with in the very near future, ahead of the RFP, so we keep that going. However, we did meet with APD, and we have some very encouraging news relative to our tactical approaches to enforcement and coordination. We are having conversations about potential pilots, and there is very positive energy coming from the department relative to what's possible ahead of the RFP. So we took your comments, we took your concerns, and we should prepare a memo or information just to give you an update on how that's going.
Thank you for that. And what's the timing of that?
So the RFP...
Well, the memos.
Let me start with the RFP. We're trying to get that out by the end of the year. And the legislation, we'd like to work with y'all before the RFP goes out. So backing up from that, we're talking over the next month and a half, having a conversation with you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And before I completely yield, just want to reiterate once again, Peachtree Street, Peachtree Street, Peachtree Street. We've come a long way, we've taken a few steps back, but I want to make sure that we get where we need to get to make it safer for everybody. So just want to hit a nail on that one more time.
And I just encourage this body and all bodies, our Vision Zero program is very active. All support and advocacy along those lines are appreciated. Year over year, we are declining or decreasing our fatality numbers, but one fatality is too many. So I just want to put that out there. We're doing amazing work. Just out with Councilmember Lewis yesterday. There's so much work in the area of safety, so we want to continue that advocacy and continue getting these projects out the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, yield.
Councilmember Lewis.
And I wasn't going to talk until you said that. But I want to first say thank you to Dr. McCall McCool, the Principal at South, at my alma mater, my other alma mater, my middle school, Crawfellow Middle School, Commissioner Cavanaugh, District 12 Safe Route School Lead Tyrese Miller, Mr. John Saxton, Ms. Nicole Hollis, Ms. Chandra Tarver, Ms. Betty Swoon-Madison, Mr. Chris McIntosh, Cole Smith, Carla Smith, Lisa Glover, Lenore. Thank you for being intentional about District 12 students getting to and from schools safely. The near misses, as I talk about most, the near misses I faced as a student going to Crawfellow, going to South Atlanta were worse than the time I actually got hit by a car. And so, the near misses are what we're trying to save people from. Thank you for that. I look forward to actually getting Sylvan Hills done. So I look forward to seeing the date and the flyer for the Sylvan Hill. And if you need help with the flyer, it should definitely have my picture on it. So if you need help, please include Nicole Jones in the making of the flyer to make sure that folks know that it's an official event. So thank you again for your intention with our students. We got that stuff that they got on North, we got that stuff now that they got all over the other parts of the city.
Thank you, Commissioner. Since we got you up there, just some of the two things for you to take notes on. No, it's actually for your team, not you, because you don't even have the answer. Over the weekend, in front of 19 Joseph E. Lowery Northwest, someone hit a telegram pole. It is currently laying across the sidewalk, so it's forcing people into the street. So if we can do something about that. And then on the corner of Mitchu and Pryor, right up the street here, new hotel opened up. They have took probably about six parking spots for their valet service, and just want to make sure that they obtain them legally, because, you know, parking downtown is a premium. And that's it. Next item, Mr. Overstreet.
All right. If there, well, back on track, if there are no objections, can we take items 15, 16, 17, and 20 together as a block?
Proceed.
All right. Item number 15, 25R3789. A resolution by Transportation Committee supplementing a joint task order fund in an amount not to exceed $4,644,800.00 for use under two quality assurance materials testing, subsurface investigations, and special inspections contracts for contract number listed herein, TerraCon Oasis Joint Venture and FC977B ATLQA a joint venture to provide inspections, subsurface investigations, and testing during construction of various airport products for the Department of Aviation on a task order basis. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 16, 25R3790. A resolution by Transportation Committee supplementing a task order fund in an amount not to exceed $726,000.00 for use under contract number listed herein for sustainability on-call airport services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with ATL Sustainable Aviation Partners, 2035 joint venture, a joint venture for the Department of Aviation on a task order basis. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. Item number 17, 25R3791. A resolution by Transportation Committee supplementing a task order fund in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000.00 for use under contract number listed herein, on-call electrical services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with Cleveland and Telle Spring, a joint venture, part of the Department of Aviation on a task order basis. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes. And item number 20, 25R3794. A resolution by Transportation Committee supplementing a task order fund in the amount not to exceed $20,268,164.00 for use under a contract number listed herein for contract construction management support services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with ATL Construction Management Partners, a joint venture comprised of Jacobs Roadfox Construction Control Services Corporation and Parsons Transportation Group Incorporated to provide construction management support services for the Department of Aviation on a task order basis. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve 15, 16, 17, and 20. Motion has been made as second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The item is, items are favorable. Brings us to item number 18, 25R3792. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, and implement all grant funds and programs from all state and federal agencies and execute documents associated with such grants for projects at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport during the 2026 federal fiscal year and for other purposes.
Move approval.
Second. Motion has been made as second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The item is favorable. Down to item number 19, 25R3793. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor to enter into a Georgia Department of Transportation standard utility actual cost agreement with the State of Georgia Department of Transportation. On behalf of the Atlanta Department of Transportation, for the purpose of adjusting the existing fiber and signal facilities that are in conflict with the Department of Transportation's clear roadside project PI number listed herein on State Route 9 from State Route 9SO to City Street 361/Winter Parkway in Fulton County, Georgia, in an amount not to exceed All contracted work will be charged to and paid from the Fund Department Organization and account number listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Motion has been made as second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The item is favorable. This brings us back to item number 21, 25R3795. A resolution by Transportation Committee increasing the compensation limit and authorizing the airport general manager or his designee to issue task orders for project numbers listed herein, parking decks reconstruction and expansion design services at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport with HKS Fitzgerald Walker Consultants Joint Venture comprised of HKS Incorporated Fitzgerald Collaborative Group LLC and Walker Consultants Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $30,000.00. All services will be charged to and paid from account numbers as listed herein and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion has been made as second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The item is favorable. This brings us to item number 22, 25R3796. A resolution by Transportation Committee authorizing the mayor or his designee to consent to an agreement of the airport use and lease agreement with Anesya Airlines Incorporated to Air Enchion Corporation Limited Liability for cargo operations at Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport and for other purposes.
Motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion has been made as second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The item is favorable.
Thank you. That brings us to Paper Sales and Committee. There is one we need to deal with that actually need to be substituted, so that's item number 26. I make a motion to bring forth the substitute. Motion has been made as second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The substitute is before the body. This is item number 26, 2501054. An ordinance by Councilmember Byron D. Amos is substituted by the Transportation Committee. An ordinance to waive the sidewalk requirements of Section 59, I'm sorry, Section 15-09.003 of Part 15 Lamb Subdivision Ordinance of the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances to provide that in lieu of constructing, constructing the required sidewalks at the subdivision site, the developer of the subdivision shall construct sidewalks on the south side of Niles Avenue Southwest between Tilden Streets Northwest and Longley Avenue Northwest, and the east side of Tilden Street Northwest between Niles Avenue Northwest and Baylor Street Northwest, totaling approximately 800 linear feet of sidewalks and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, for the record, the substitute strikes the language requiring the applicant to deposit funds into the District 3 Trust Fund Account and adds language requiring the applicant to construct sidewalks at an alternate location.
Thank you. Before I make a, well, I make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Motion has been made as second. Just want to thank everyone that played a role in pulling this together, and that's everyone from ATL DOT to the developer, all the way down to the community. Everyone had a voice in making this happen. We finally got it to where everyone is happy. So motion has been made as second. Please open the vote.
Vote is open. Vote is closed. Five yeas, zero nays. The item has been, is favorable as substituted. Mr. Chair, that concludes our legislative agenda for today.
Thank you. Any comments, concerns, announcements? Saying now, we stand adjourned. Thank you.